Good evening. We're going to call this meeting for the Board of Education in order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Ms. O'Neil, is there a second? Ms. Dayton? All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Peter, are you? Okay, that box is seven zero. Thank you. Tables are angled a little bit. All right. So our first order of business is a little bit bittersweet for us. We are going to recognize some of our outgoing members. First up would be John Tonner for the selectmen. Peter Tessie has a family thing at a school tonight, so he gets a pass.
Greenwich is a great town to live in. In part, this is because of the tremendous school system we have here. And this will only become more apparent over, in the first 10 years that Dr. Jones is with us. Another reason that Greenwich is great is because it is, in effect, run by very highly skilled and intelligent volunteers. And a great example of this is the Board of Education. And tonight, we are seeing a shift on that board as many long-term members move on. My good friend Barbara O'Neil, who has been a member since 2011, is leading the board. She brought her many years of teaching and experience on various boards and commissions to the table. Another good friend, Jennifer Dayton, a member since 2011, leaves after serving ably on many committees over the years. Dr. Gayton Francis, a highly respected member of the mental community in Greenwich and a member since 2015, adding a unique perspective to the board. And Lauren Wright Raven, a member since 2015, has the longest association with the Greenwich Public School System from her time in kindergarten until today. I am pleased that she will be moving into my job at the end of this month. Now, therefore, I, John F. Tonner, Selectman of the Town of Greenwich, on behalf of Peter J. Tessie, First Selectman of the Town of Greenwich, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2019, as Greenwich Board of Education members' recognition. Thank you.
Next up, Steve Mesker, who's representing there. I want to know if Fred is here. Steve?
Well, I won't hold up the meeting too long. I'm sure Fred, normally I would expect him here, but I would guess he's got about five minutes and Fred will probably be here based on my experience so far in political life. I think just a moment and a commentary and a thank you to the members who serve. Having an audience of teachers and an audience of students and an audience of taxpayers and dealing with the various constituencies is, I think all of you will acknowledge, a challenging effort. I would like to personally thank you on behalf of the delegation for your effort that you've made in public service. I, you know, a rookie in my first year of public service, and it is a strength, well, 14 years on the RTM as well, but it is a strength of the job. And I want to congratulate all of you. And I would like to single out Mrs. O'Neil, who joined the District 6 RTM this year. And even though I try to make myself visible, she walloped a good portion of the other members with a very high turnout and count. So I want to congratulate her and welcome to the RTM District 6. And thank you all.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, on behalf of our administrators, Angela Schuck. This is going to be done by Jean. It is your building.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Cabinet. On behalf of GOSE, we would like to thank our departing Board members Lauren Raven, Gayton Francis, Barbara O'Neil, and Jennifer Dayton for your years of service to our students and, of course, to the school district. Over the years, I have personally reflected on the Herculean tasks required of Board members. First of all, many hours of preparation, research, rec words to be sifted through, attendance, and many, many committee meetings, board retreats, and the volume of discussions that follow. I get tired thinking of having to.
Angela, you just discouraged a whole lot of people who are going to join the board.
It's going to be great. I've also thought about the fact that you are volunteers and in many cases have jobs. But still, you give generously of your time, time that could be spent with family, reading for pleasure, or simply winding down the end of a long day. So I did some research on my own to better understand the meaning of volunteerism. And I found a quote that really resonated with me, the broadest and maybe the most meaningful definition of volunteering, doing more than you have to because you want to in a cause that you consider good. I believe these four Board members are here for this very reason. And I believe they truly think our students will fulfill the mission of the graduate. And thank you for helping us get there. You have exhibited commitment to our schools as Board Chairs, Vice Chairs, Secretaries. You have served on negotiation teams, unpacked food services, Greenwich Alliance, curriculum council, strategic planning, and the list goes on and on. So on behalf of GOSE, we honor you for your passion and dedication and for your unselfish devotion to our students. Knowing how passionate and dedicated you are, I asked Jean if he could give you some ideas for what you might do now. So Jean.
Okay. So again, knowing that you're going to have all this free time on your hands, we did some research and came up with a list of the top 10 things that you could do to help fill that free time that you have. So number 10, you can get giddy. The gig economy is a big way to use your time. Rent over money at B&amp;B, do hair at weddings, do odd jobs from putting together IKEA furniture to picking up roast chicken from the deli or standing in line to get tickets. Babysitting. Consider being a childcare provider. Parents are always looking for responsible adults to take care of their children after school, PTA meetings. Tour guide. Whether it's a safari or museum, there are benefits. You get to travel and you can become an expert on history, art, architecture. If you really want a little magic, go to Disney, be a Disney character and make some kids smile. Park ranger. When you were stuck inside every day in all those meetings, did you dream that you could just be outdoors? Well, here's your chance to live the dream by becoming a part-time park ranger. Number five, cruise ship staff. See the world while working in the gift shop, the kids club, photography, or even being someone's partner on the dance floor. Speaking of dancing, if you have always loved to dance, try ballroom dancing. It has proven to improve your mental, physical, and emotional health. And FYI, tomorrow night, there is a hip-hop and ravey dance contest. Number three, be a pet sitter. If you have known to disappear from a party to spend quality time with a close four-legged friend, then maybe dog walking or pet sitting would be a good job for you. Start clowning around. Once you've mastered balloon animals and how not to make children cry, this might be a perfect way for you as the nation has a clown shortage right now. And number one, the way to use your free time is to be an Uber or Lyft driver. Now that you don't have to drive to meetings every day, you might actually enjoy driving. You can set up your own hours and meet interesting people from all walks of life. But in all seriousness, we would like again to thank you for your service to the Greenwich Public Schools and the community. Thank you.
Next up is Pearl Sutton, on behalf of our teachers.
So good evening, everyone. Cabinet, Board, Dr. Jones, honored guests and community members. I'm honored this evening to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. And like all the previous speakers, it is my pleasure and an honor to honor you this evening, our outgoing Board members. And so I just want to say a little bit about each person because I've spent a lot of time sitting in the room with you over the past seven years and getting to know you. So first, Jennifer Dayton. Jennifer, thank you for always making an all for you. You make extremely good eye contact when anyone's talking to you. It's very nice. Our students need to learn, will learn from that about presenting. So Jennifer, you're the one that every teacher wants in class. You, we want you in class. You always did your homework. It was evident. You were always prepared. And you came not only prepared, but you came with solutions, with potential solutions. You didn't just throw things on the table and say, what are we going to do? You always started your comments with a positive. That's also something for us all to remember. And you were always realistic as you approached the issues that came to you. And when you said you were glad to see me, even though I'm the union president, I think you actually were. Yeah, so that was really good. So I'm going to miss seeing you very much and the hard work that you did. Barbara? Where are you? Barbara, GEA is so proud that a former member of our association sat on the Board of Education for eight years, from teacher to administrator and then Board member. You have worn many hats for the Greenwich Public Schools. When I took on this role in 2013, you wrapped, reached out to me and we had long conversations at Starbucks. And I was grateful for the opportunity to interact with you off-camera. And you say we never agree on anything much, but I do believe that we share, and GEA shares, the fundamental belief that all children can learn and that public education is a public good and an investment in the future. And I'm certainly glad that you were here to build us up and to protect us. Lauren Raven, you will be remembered for your four years as the Board member who didn't talk a lot. You know, you didn't talk a lot, but when you did, everyone listened up. Everyone did. When you asked a question, it always got right to the core of what the issue was. And you were always well-prepared in any topic that you were grappling with. So I know you're going to bring that same energy and enthusiasm and professionalism and seriousness and love to the job that you're taking on. And let's hope that all these close relationships you have are going to help us both in the future. And finally, Dr. Gayton Francis, ever the scientist, you approach the matters that came to your table logically and practically like a diagnostician, but always with a great big heart. When students were recognized for their achievements or spoke to the Board, or I'm remembering when you led it on, just so happy they were in their same building, your eyes shone with pride and wonder and caring for what they were saying. And it was also very obvious, you may not know it, but that you grappled with issues. You grappled with the easy ones and you grappled with the intractable ones. And I know you knew that the decisions you made would impact real people. And so you sort of demonstrated that being a Board member is not easy. And if it was, everyone would want to be one, but certainly we were so fortunate that we chose this path for four years. And so finally, for all of you, all four of you, on behalf of GEA, on behalf of the teachers, I want to thank you for everything you have done as volunteers. And you've done it for the students, the faculty, the staff, the parents, the families, and for the entire Greenwich School community. And we are so fortunate and we thank you for that. And if you're, if you have any free time and you want to work in it, you know how to be gentle, okay? Thank you so much.
Next up are Richard Diamond and Brian Feldin, who's representing PTA Council.
Good evening, everyone. The Council of Greenwich Parent and Teacher Associations would like to thank and recognize Jennifer Dayton, Gayton Francis, Barbara O'Neil, and Lauren Raven for the considerable time, dedication, and effort that they have unselfishly given to the Greenwich Public School District. Ms. Dayton, Ms. Francis, Ms. O'Neil, and Ms. Raven have been vital to the success of the Greenwich Public School District during their combined 24 years of service to the community. They have kept their focus on what is best for our students and families while also maintaining fiscal responsibility. They have never been afraid to express their opinions, have asked thoughtful and pointed questions that helped PTA better understand the important details contained in numerous reports, and have shown that they view our students as individuals with different needs and goals. These incredible women took leadership roles within the Board of Education, including, but not limited to Barbara O'Neil as Board Chair and Board Secretary, Lauren Raven as Board Liaison to Food Services and Student Government, Jennifer Dayton as Vice Chair and PTA Liaison, and Gayton Francis as PGC Chair and the Alliance Liaison. During their tenure, they worked with, we had a debate about the proper adjective, many, several, numerous, innumerable superintendents, and have still managed to drive important initiatives. They helped to oversee the creation and implementation of the district's strategic plan, aided in introducing the 15-year master facilities plan, and navigated the often choppy waters of school start time, field remediation, and budget preparation. We would like to sincerely thank them for their commitment across all of these and many other areas where they have been involved as Board of Education members, past PTA members, and as leaders, teachers, and parents. We want to send you off with our traditional thank you gift from Council, a pen as a sign of academic achievement, personal appreciation, and respect. We hope that you use these pens to write the next exciting chapter in your lives. It has been PTA Council's privilege to work with each of you, and we wish you luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
All right. If anybody hadn't noticed earlier this week, we did quite a Camillo time. So Mr. Representative Camillo, if you want to step up for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members, and guests. Representative Meskers called me earlier and said to hold back a little bit and I wanted to address you. Just following the orders, everyone. We have four citations from the Connecticut General Assembly introduced by Representative Meskers, Lauren, myself, and Senator Bernstein, acknowledging the retirement of the Board and the dedicated service to our students of the Town of Jennifer Dayton, Lauren Raven, Gayton Francis, and Barbara O'Neil. We wish you nothing but the best in all of your future endeavors. And again, thank you for everybody up at the General Assembly and the Town of Greenwich. And they're signed by Speaker of the House, Joe Nerson. Thanks again.
Next up, Johnny Jones.
Lauren, Jennifer, Barbara, oh, Gayton sneaked it away. Sorry. There you go. Sorry. On behalf of the school district, I just want to say how much we appreciate the years of service that you've given to the school district. And I hope you understand really, truly how important the Board is to the direction that a school district is going to go. And I know I haven't had the chance to work with you a really long time. I wish I had a longer time. But I did watch you all of last year. I watched all of your meetings. And I will say the one thing about the four of you, and I think everyone has said that tonight, you ask wonderful questions. You are truly passionate about education and children, and it shows. The other thing I want to say about being a great Board member is that you don't always agree with staff, or you may not always agree with one another, but there is, it cannot be understated that the stability of a Board is a model for our entire school system, for all of the young people who watch you. Every meeting, it's surprising how many people are sitting, even tonight, you see young people in the audience, and they watch how Boards of Education conduct themselves. So on behalf of the staff, thank you for really caring, being passionate, and just wonderful people to serve on the Board. And we wish you the best of luck doing all of those things that Jean mentioned, but I know you're probably going to find other things to do as well. Thank you.
All right. You guys have been sitting long enough. So Dr. Francis, Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Dayton, Ms. Raven, please come up and join me. I'm not going to be a camera.
So I can actually quantify how many hours we put in a year because I'm a lawyer and we like to track our time. You have sat at meetings over 200 hours a year. You've done this for eight years, eight years, four years, four years. That's a lot of time. You're away from home. Some may say dedication to service, others might say cry for help. I spent more time with the four of you, getting to know you, working with you, nibbling with you, finding common ground. And it's really been an honor to serve with you. Some of you are going on to do other things. Some of you will still be volunteering in other ways. This doesn't stop. One of the things that I take from working with all of you is the sense that the community has a shared responsibility to educate our youth, that we all believe that all of our students can learn, doesn't matter what their gender, race, socioeconomic status. Basically, you have all been committed to that in every way, and it's really moving. You know, when Barbara and Jennifer ran the first time, I'm like, I like them. And it made me want to do it. I sat in the audience as a PTA president, and I'm like, you know, I think I can keep doing this. And it's people like you all that inspire others to do it. It's probably one of the most frustrating things I've ever done in my life. I'm sure you all sense that. It's also one of the most rewarding things, and you've all made great contributions to the Town. You'll keep doing it to the students. And really, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Board. I want to thank you on behalf of the Town. It's been an amazing experience. And of course, you can't go away without a little parting gift. So Dr. Francis? Ms. Dayton?
Thank you.
Ms. Raven? Barbara? Now, I don't know if anybody's got a camera, but if you don't, take those out of your box. Oh, I have a camera. The perks of being on the Board, just so everybody knows, are a town parking pass, which they're going to unceremoniously take away from them.
No way.
Yep, it's true. Don't you get to hand your kids diplomas at graduation, but when you leave, you get something that is really part of education. Why don't you rock that? All right. Sorry, I got to do this. You can do bell cameras. Exactly. You don't need more cowbell. You have a new one. There you go. Thank you all.
Thank you for indulging us. We do spend an awful lot of time together. We spend way too much time together, and yet we like each other. It's pretty amazing. Anyway, all right, we're going to move on for the star of the event, the Pledge. So let's start with Dr. Jones.
Before I actually start on the budget presentation, I just want to take just one minute and say a special thanks to the Cabinet for all the work that they have done on this budget. Also, just to say a special thank you to Lori O'Donnell. Next week, she will be leaving us, and she has kept her foot on the gas pedal this entire budget production. And I just feel so grateful to you, Lori. Thank you very much. Chair Bernstein, Vice Chair Dayton, Secretary O'Neil, members of the Board, public staff, I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the 2020-2021 budget. First of all, I'd just like the community to understand there's a lot of preparation that goes into presenting and preparing a budget of this magnitude. We start by examining the current 2019-20 budget. We've examined the need for staffing adjustments across the school district. We've gathered new enrollment projection data, reviewed estimated fixed costs, things like insurance or transportation. We've gathered local, state, and federal funding information. We reviewed the strategic plan, and we met with all of our department leaders. And in Greenwich, this is a little unusual. It is a 12-month budget cycle. And we actually, in Fairfield County, are the earliest to present our budget, and almost by two months compared to most of our other localities. After we do that, we actually go through reflection and refinement process, making sure that we're building a budget that is in line with our mission, and that's critical. We look at our student outcomes, make sure that if we have an area we want to target, are we using our dollars in the budget to do that? This is actually English Language Arts, SBA, and our SAT results. You can see we're trending in the right direction. The light blue is actually our high-need students, again, trending in the right direction. But this is an area where we've targeted a little bit more money for professional development because we think we can even do better. This is actually our mathematics, again, trending in the right direction, making sure that what's in our budget is aligned with what we need to be doing. When we look at what's happening on college readiness, we have 32 advanced placement courses. We are averaging right around that 89, 90% of our students who are scoring three, four, and five, and that is pretty phenomenal, much higher than what you see nationally. We also are looking at growth. It's not just about the end score for a student. Where do they start? Where do they end? And are we closing those achievement gaps? And that's just, this is representative of showing you how we are doing. Again, we're trending in the right direction and certainly outpacing the state by quite a way. This year, we have program snapshots, which were new for us. And I did email those out to the Board the day. We'll have these on the web next week. But this is really designed to provide insight into the impact of our investment. We use these to inform our budget development, operational plans. Also, we have completed Phase One, which is 28 of the 43 instructional snapshots. The ones that are not completed are operational or have to do a special education. And as you know, we have a consultant this year. We'll have another consultant coming next year and a superintendent's office. And again, the snapshots will be posted for people that have an interest in looking at those. We also want to look beyond standardized tests because children and schools are so much more than a test score. What's happening in our academics? Are we being successful? And some of that has to do with our National Merit finalist, the awards that we have won in art and writing, not just in math and reading and science. Also looking at the interpersonal. And since we're at CAFC Club tonight, I wanted to mention their ESL Thinking Club. The best, I think, tribute to that, we're doing some great work. The best, I think, tribute to that we're doing some great work is when the children are creating and leading these sorts of activities. Our athletics program, we have 43 sports, 100 different teams. Last year, we had five state championships, and plenty different students had either Division One or scholarships to premier colleges. Now, we're going to look at some of the more drivers in the budget, look at our demographic and enrollment, revenue and expense, our historical budget trends, some of the budget challenges we're facing this year, what are some of the budget priorities, and the proposed operating and capital budgets. We're going to start by looking at student demographics. And if you look at the top left, this is our October 1 count. And just as a reminder, this changes all year long. You can have a student who leaves, another student enrolls, but this is our official count, just over 9,000 students. We are eligible for free and reduced. This year is almost exactly where we were last year. And just as a reminder for the community, the rise that you see in that bar graph is not attributed to a demographic change, it's attributed to how we are finding our families eligible through the Medicaid process. On the right-hand side, you're going to see on the top the English Language learners. And interesting enough, from 1415 to 1920, we've actually reduced by two percentage points, which is a different trend than we're seeing at the state, which is that top blue line across the top. Our graduation rates are consistently 96% or higher. And as a reminder, you don't see last year's graduation, we get that this spring, so we have to wait. This is what our trend looks like for our history and forecast for enrollment. On the left-hand side, you're seeing actuals in the middle. You're seeing what we know by known birth rate, so they're pretty solid. When you get out to the far right, where it's the goldish color, that is really more of an estimate because there isn't anything other than the trends that you think are going to happen to build that on to get a projection that far. This is a question that I think I've heard around town literally in the last month or two. What's happening with kindergarten? Why is kindergarten down? And I think it's just good for people to understand that when the birth rate is down, it will impact our kindergarten numbers, and then you're going to see the trend go down over time. So what you're looking at in yellow is on the left, this year, we'll graduate 725 seniors. So it's a big group, but we only have 595 kindergarteners. So that's going to cause that cohort that they move through the system to have a natural enrollment decline. When you look at the projections for student enrollment, it's basically net loss of 48 students. And again, this is across a large system with more than 9,000 students. So when you look at this, you have to keep in mind that in grades six through eight, 15 of the 16 projected are at Western. So it doesn't help us lower the FTE at Western, and it doesn't take the pressure off of Eastern, which is a school that is almost 200 students larger than our other schools. The K5, when you look at going down 53 students, again, when you have 11 elementaries, six grade levels at every elementary, 53 doesn't have a huge impact where we're losing teachers. And what's happening this year, I'm going to give you just a very simple picture. If this is seven teachers, and they all have 22 students, that's 154 children. Those same seven teachers next year have 17 students. We still need 17, we still need seven teachers, and there's quite a large differential in how many students we have. That's what's happening. And next year, we are projected to go down in three sections, but we are projected, we have six that are right on the border. So that's why you see it's flat this year in the budget. This is what the projection trend for K12 looks like. In K5, we're kind of at a high right now. It's going to slowly go down, but keep in mind only those bars on the left, and there's a little P after the number, if you can see that. That's true projection based on birth. When you start getting to the right, you're not as confident. This is what's happening in six through eight. They had a large sixth-grade cohort that is moving through our middle school right now, but in high school, we're seeing the opposite. And high school right now feels like the building is really full. If you go walk in the halls and you talk to the staff, it feels full, but we're just starting. So when you overlay the three, this is what's going to happen in K5, this is six, eight. So it looks like we're kind of going down. Then all of a sudden, right when we think we're going down, we're actually going up in the most expensive area of our school district, which is high school. We're going to look at just a little bit of revenue and expense. And again, this is informational only because our revenue flows through to the town. But what I do want to point out is that 1.1 million from the state. We, for the last couple of years, have kept feeling like, especially in Greenwich, that we were going to lose all of our ECS funding. That hasn't happened. So far, we are expecting still that that 1.1 million will be there for the town, which is a great thing. When we look at our operating budget, those of you who saw the operating budget online know that it's at 2.3% is the proposed superintendent's budget, a little bit higher than guidance. But within that budget, 82% of that is personnel. We are a people business. Of that personnel expense, this is the other piece that's really important. Where are we spending that? Is it on Heffelein, administration, or is it out in the schools and people working with our children? We want to see our teachers, our coaches, assist coordinators, include your building administrators in that line, but 90% of that personnel are people who are out in the schools on a daily basis. Our transportation budget is also increasing by 2.59%. What you'll see in the orange, 50% of that is general education. Special education is in that teal, kind of light blue, lighter blue, and the purple is private schools. And as a reminder, I think most of the people understand how transportation works in Connecticut, but we are, we do transport all private and public, and that's my law. And we're working on our route efficiency. School lunch fund is separate from operating fund, but just to note that next year, we are looking at a school lunch fund that is very similar to what it looks like this year. Our goal with school lunch is to try to stay in the black. We have a lot of work happening in food service right now to increase our menus, try to make the food more attractive. We're also doing some sustainability aspects I'll talk about in just a minute. The historical budget trends, this is just one slide, and it just gives you an idea how our school district has been funded for the last 19 years. So if you go back to 2002, 2003, 2004, the trend was much higher in those budget requests and what was actually coming to the school district. When you look on the right-hand side, where we're seeing more of those 2% increases, what it means is the school district must operate incredibly efficiently, and can you continue to do so each year because our salaries are running, our salary line is running higher than the increases that we're getting. So this is just informational. When you look at some of the budget challenges we're having this year, the staff salaries, contractual payments, transportation contract utilities, and windrows rental, just having a place for our windrows program next year, is 92% of the requested 3.8. When you look at operations and management of the building, I think we're very fortunate with this slide this year in that our utilities are only going up 100,000. And it's actually in the water service, which is interesting. You two would think it would be lighter. Budget reductions, efficiencies, and deferrals. Preschool staffing, we are adjusting the preschool staffing ratio, trying to help with a very growing program that's growing very, very quickly. We are freezing two central office positions in this budget, not funding them going into next year to work on efficiencies. We are also eliminating one bus out of, that we believe that we need. We would like to reduce more than one, but we cannot do that until we for sure have the route efficiency. We also want to maintain level staffing. This is close to half a million in reductions, our cost avoidance that we have counted on this year in the budget. So what are some of the budget focuses from the community, from the Board of Education, as we've listed to the community? We want to begin to transition to the metal trays and dishwashers. That's been a lot of discussion this year on the Board of Education. That item falls in the capital budget, and it is in there this year for future board discussion. We also want to increase our professional learning for language arts. We've done that by shifting categories, not adding more money. Purchasing texted materials for targeted areas, we have some areas specifically at the high school, we need to replace those texts. Adapting our approach to purchasing technology. So out of our per-student amount this year, we took 1,250, moved that across to the technology line, and that was done so that as the schools have those requests and they need items, we can do more bulk purchasing and get a better price point and consistency across the district. We also know that we need focus on special education just going into next year, and the board would like us to be doing a study, so that is built in. And then the food service enhancements, not only in sustainability and the trays, but also the food. And sometimes when you actually have healthier food, it's more expensive. So finding a way to really have a great menu that balances that out. Again, that's about a half a million in support of the mission that we're hearing from our community and our board. We've also looked at what are the ways that we are consolidating and sharing services because this was even in the BET guidance, and we in Greenwich are, I think, have a lot of pride that we really do well, work well with our town colleagues. And this is not meant to be representative of everything that we do, but we are one of the few school districts, for instance, where benefits are held on the town side and they take care of those for us, even our MUNIS software system and sharing the same software system. We continue to look for efficiencies, but we are doing a very good job in Greenwich. We're proud of that. The other thing that I know was even in the BET guidance is are we developing partnerships? How are we working with the town? Not just on athletics, our music, or booster clubs, but what about our instructional partnerships? And again, this is not meant to be representative of everybody that works with us, but these organizations are not just $4,000 grant. There's some major accomplishments that happen through these organizations. As a matter of fact, next week, the Greenwich Alliance for Education will have an event where they're honoring the $250,000 that was given in grants for instruction. That's a lot of money. On the right-hand side, Greenwich United Way runs an amazing tutoring program for our children every day after school that truly impacts our instructional quality. And all of these organizations, from wraparound services to tutoring, we are partnering with and helping the district. Our budget priorities this year, the initial draft budget was at 2.62. That was the pro forma assumption with added contractual increases, the $125,000 for windrows, and added contractual increase for transportation and utilities, and that was it. Then we looked at what's not in the budget that we thought we were going to be able to fit in. The first is position control software. We believe position control is critical. It's very important, but the staff have made huge gains on being able to go in and reconcile staffing. We're going to continue to look at this, especially with the new financial officer and also interim HR director. We don't want to go buy software that may not meet their needs since we have new leaders. Also, our professional development restoration, we couldn't restore the entire amount of money that was reduced last year, but we tried to target the areas where we think it's needed most. We do know class sizes are running large at GHS. We're going to need to continue to go in and really look at our schedule and how can we find more efficiencies there. Eastern middle school staffing, they have the same number of administrators, counselors, as our other two middle schools who have 200 less students. We need to continue to find a way going into next year to help them with staffing. Cardinal field bleacher rental, and the board will take this up at the next meeting on are we going to have a plan to put the bleachers in? Bleachers with something underneath, but we did not build in the rental for all of next year, hoping that we can be aggressive on this project, and if not, we will have to go back to operations and look. Staffing for new graduation requirements. This is our operating staffing that you'll see in the budget book. And when you look at the delta between the certified and non-certified, it's a total, it looks like an addition of 1.15. I think it's important to, for the board and the community to understand, we're not actually adding to the budget. This is a, this is actually prepay. And our preschool went to 14 sections in 1819, but when that happened, there were, it's too late to get it in to the 1920 budget. We currently have 14 sections, and that's largely what you're seeing here. Next year, we actually have 13. We also know we're going to have, which I mentioned earlier, the special education focus before the study. This is just to let the board know how special education is trending. In 1920, where we are right now, we're slightly higher than we were last year, we're at 12.2%. But if you'll notice, in 1819, the state was already at 15%. It's gone up another percentage, and everybody in the state has seen this rise. When you look at special education out of district tuition, this is a tricky one. It is for every school district, not only in Connecticut but across the country. But also, it's important to know that in that 5.4 million, it is out of, it's out of district tuition, but it also includes two other categories. One of those is part of ESS, and then also the place spends. So the proposed operating budget for this year from the superintendent is $167,141,586. And the increase over the 1920 operating budget is 2.31% or 3.777,394. Again, when you look at the changes at a glance and what this budget is telling us, staff salaries and contractual payments, transportation, utilities, operations, and maintenance is 2.09% with just those four categories. So the items on the bottom are what make up the differential between that 2.09 and the The proposed capital budget, we have major projects, annual infrastructure and technology in the capital budget of $25,995,000. In our development considerations, we looked at the master plan. The board has taken that work very seriously. We looked at the priorities. We also looked at what work is currently in progress, and also what is our workload capacity and our ability to make sure that we can get the projects completed that we are presenting. In our facilities master plan, this is more for the community as a reminder. In 1718, the master plan study and development happened. They, we looked at the prioritization in May and June, and those priorities were based on capacity, security, ADA compliance, air quality, HVAC. So there's a good reason why schools are put in certain orders in the master plan. The Board of Education adopted the prioritization in June of 2018, and in summer of 19, we reviewed the projects for the upcoming budget year. And in the summer of 2019, our operations staff walked every building with the principals to make sure what is in this capital request is actually in need. The major projects, we have five this year. The one at the top is the Greenwich High School renovation, security, entry, and media, design, and construction documents, that's after the feasibility completes. Then the design study for the renovation extension of old Greenwich, that's really the feasibility study for old Greenwich. Joy and Curtis, we are in the middle of the feasibility right now. We will be ready to do design, development, construction, design. The cardinal field improvement, this was put in there, depending on what the board decides at that next meeting, so that this number could go up, could go down. Central middle school, we were advised to put in the placeholder so that that money is there to consider. How we're going to work on the fields, we expect in the next eight to 12 weeks for the board to have numbers that go along with those field design for you to be looking at and be able to consider. We also have the capital technology budget, infrastructure, ongoing digital learning, most notably student devices are on the refresh cycle. And at the bottom, you'll see the lease payment. This is the last year for the lease payment. The annual infrastructure, when you see the blue on the left, it's mainly in heating and cooling. On the right, you're looking at the exterior in the red, the building envelope, that's where most of our dollars are going. The bottom portion is really about space improvements. Those could be anything from restrooms to really flooring, the things that we need to do inside, but also to help us be a 21st century school district. That's where our furniture money also sits. And all of these pictures that you're seeing tonight are our classrooms. These are all taken since September of this year, and this just gives you an idea of the flexibility. If you look on the top right of the stools that children are sitting on and the flexible furniture that we're using, this is what we want to see. We want to see active children in active classrooms. For the capital budget process, it will go to the board next, of course, for approval, then it goes to the first selectman, then to the BET, and then followed lastly in May to the RTM. So in summary, this is our operating budget request from the superintendent as proposed at 2.31%, $167,141,586. And our capital budget at $25.9 million is about $17,000 less than it was last year, just in case you're wondering. And with that, I will say thank you. And this is, we do have a lot of key dates coming up. I will be at the PTA tomorrow. It's my first meeting, picking up budget questions. But again, this is all available online. I know this is really tiny, but we have a lot of meetings between now and the end of the school year, and we encourage you to come and join us and get engaged in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Clearly, a lot of work has been done. Just process-wise for everybody, we used to actually have one more budget meeting. We don't. So traditionally, this is a presentation. Because we have less time with the superintendent and staff, we're on the budget, we're going to take some discussion tonight. Mr. Sargent, do you have your hand up?
Yeah. Go ahead. King up. Just jump in, or? Okay. Tony, thank you for preparing this, and thank you for the staff for preparing this. It's always a big job to get this thing out the door. I have a couple different questions, but they're all related to your executive summary. And let me ask one, and then I'll yield to other people because they probably have them too. too. On the first page of your executive summary, it says, which is true, you know, some very high percentage of our budget is salary expense. And it said here that approximately 80% of the expense budget, full-time salaries. I know when you put in the part-time salaries, that's an even higher number. I think it's into the high 80s or 90s maybe. But what I didn't understand was if that's 80% of the budget and our increase, it says at the end of the paragraph, accounts for 63, the salary part is 63% of the year-over-year Then why are we exceeding? Can you just summarize on why we're exceeding the guideline like that, if that's the case? Because if the salary is, 90% of the budget is going up at a lower number, I just didn't understand how that math worked. Maybe Lori, you can answer that question. I mean, I couldn't bother to dig through every number in the budget. I was just wondering if there was a simple answer to that statement in the executive summary. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Am I making, am I speaking Greek or?
Sorry, I'm trying to follow along.
Sometimes I'm not. On the first page of the budget, in the first paragraph, in the middle, it says, "Full-time salaries account for 80% of the expense budget." And then the last line says, because we're running over the guideline, it says, "The salary accounts for 63% of the increase." I guess I would have expected that it would have eaten up close to what salaries are, like 80%, but it doesn't seem to say that. It says, "We're taking the other 40% and it's for things other than salary." So I just didn't understand that. I was hoping somebody could easily explain that.
I'd have to do a little.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
To be sure I answered that question.
And? Yeah, 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 okay, fine. If there's not a ready answer, I'll move on.
I think one of.
We'll figure it out by looking at the numbers.
I think one of the slides explained it better. It might, one of the slides you showed explained it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have the slides posted to the website.
You want to increase it to 2.9% less than that, you might afford the salaries, right?
Well, is that what it said?
Well, we know with the teacher contract, that's right.
Well, that's teacher, yeah.
It's mostly.
Okay. I tell you what, I'll yield to someone else for another question.
Mr. Davis.
I was wondering if someone could go over the placeholder for central middle school field, because when I calculate the number of weeks before the budget vote, doesn't seem like we can make the decision in that time before we submit the whole budget to the first
We do believe that we will be able to get information in front of the board. Staff have been working very hard on it over the last, I don't know, six months, year. And Melona McBroom have done the first iteration. They're putting numbers together. We hope to have those in December.
Even if we have the numbers, before you came, there was a big debate over grass versus turf. We had a lot of stakeholders speaking in public hearings. There was a lot of information circulating in the RTM. So I want to see if there's enough time for public comment. I don't see how the timeline really works, but I'll be convinced if you can show me that we have time in December to get to all the stakeholders.
I think, I want to be really clear too. We're not really going in any one direction. What the board will see in front of them will be the options, you know, how much is it to go with engineered grass versus turf? And that'll be a decision the board will have to make. Because these are multi-year projects, if it's not in the project this year, and of course, the board will have to decide whether they want to push it forward now or look at it later, but we know it does take time. These are multi-year projects, so getting it started is really important if we want to get the field fixed.
Okay. So I think I might be close, but let me just ask my question first. So just to reset expectations for a second, last year, we were presented a budget that went up, the superintendent, sorry, proposed budget was 2.83% increase. Granted, that was with a 3.6% teacher contract. I think our contract this year is at 2.9%. So we're, it's basically the same differential. We're sort of heading in the same direction. I think it was, this was a good first shot, but, and I know it's really hard because we're at 80%, but I would like to try to keep going. One of the things, though, that concerned me, and I'm just trying to figure it out, is that you talked about the increase in class sizes at GHS. In these numbers, have you already changed that staffing model back from last year? Or is that something that you were trying to do in addition?
No, we have not added staff. We've not changed the staffing model. What's in the budget book is just really information for the board, and if, I'm sorry, I don't have the page right in front of me. It's over 50 sections that are at 27, and that's, that's uncustomary for Greenwich High Schools, so it's really just letting the board know class sizes are turning high. But we're going to continue to look for efficiencies in the master schedule and continue to work on that.
So I have a question that you might not be able to answer right tonight, but there's a statement in the budget book that says that according to a state statute, the amount of money allocated for special ed cannot be decreased. I was just wondering, what money is that included? And as I say, it's probably more of a research question to find out what it is that is included in that number, in that statement when they say special ed funding cannot be decreased. You know what, I'll find a page and let you know.
I'll turn out to be so quiet. I was wondering, the, you mentioned in the slide deck, the reusable trays and dishwashers, and I don't know where that was actually called out. I don't know if it was going to be on page 11 and 10 where it listed all of the capital or if it was in pages around 115 where it talks just about food services. It just wasn't clear.
So I actually wanted to ask about Western Middle School Field. I know that we're getting closer with the state. I'm wondering why we don't try to put a plug number in in the event that we actually get a plan approved by the state so that we could actually move forward. Is that something we can consider?
Absolutely. We, we're going from some guidance that the preference may be to go for an interim, but if the board wants to put that in there, we would be happy to put that in.
Tony, I, this is probably more signaling than a question, but maybe it's here, I just didn't see it. Tonight later, we're going to talk about enrollment report, and there's some data we normally get in the enrollment report, but this year it isn't there. I don't know why that is. But it, it results in this question. You highlighted, we've known for a very long time, I know it might be new because you're new, that there's a bubble moving through the enrollment in the school, yeah, school system. You know, we have 9,000 kids, it's in 15 schools, 15 schools. And it's moving through because it's lumpy. And what I didn't see in here is we have, we've known we were having increasing enrollment at the high school for a while, and we knew we were having, going to have, projected to have, and it's turned out this way, declining enrollment at the elementary. But what I didn't see here, which was hard to see, is we probably have the right number of staff, but we probably don't, we may not have them distributed as optimally as we could. So I'm very concerned by this point you make on page two of the executive summary where you say there's eroding instructional quality. That leapt off the table for me, or off the page rather, for me. And you then outline, you know, what that is, what that means in terms of people. So is there somewhere in here that I can see where the staff has shifted kind of year to year? Is that, or should I just put that in as a round one question?
Are you asking for staff shifting at the high school from year to year, or you're asking from?
Well, we have 13, we have, if I'm not wrong, we have like 1,350 people roughly, roughly 900 of them are certified teachers, roughly, I think. If I'm wrong. And I'm wondering really, I'm very interested in how those 900 got deployed amongst the 15 buildings, right? Because what I would have expected is, is as enrollment came down in the elementary schools, which is really tricky because it's scattered across 11 elementary schools, so that's not an easy thing. You can't just take out. It doesn't work that way. But I would have thought there would have been some efficiencies there of head count, GEA head count, that could have been redeployed to positions at the high school. Now, it probably doesn't do much. I mean, it's not like, hey, take out of these and add, take 10 out of here and add 10 over there. But every head that goes into the high school, because there's a bubble of increasing enrollment, takes pressure off of class size and allows more sections of popular classes to be offered and so on and so forth, and reduces class size. So I was wondering where I might see all those puts and takes that are in this proposed plan.
This proposed plan holds staffing flat right now, and that's because at elementary, even though it's going down by, I think it's 54 students, we can't lose a teacher there. We're, we still have some pressures in middle school as well, especially at Eastern, which is running large. And when we adjusted the ratio last year, it did lift class sizes, so we also have to be very cognizant that we don't end up with class sizes of 30 or 32. We are trying to make it work, and next year at the high school, we are, we are continuing our work to go through the master schedule to look for sections that are smaller and sections that are larger, and how can we rebalance the master schedule? And we'll be doing that all year long. And we did, we did not add head count.
I'm, yeah, I got that part. Okay. I'm going to be asking for in phase one, just so you can know now, I'll be asking for staffing by role type, by building, right? Which I'm sure you have somewhere. It used to be in the budget book, but it's not in this one right now, and that's okay.
Yeah, if you look back in the pages like where there's 60s.
I couldn't find it. Is it here somewhere?
Yeah, look in the 60s. We added it back in this year. There's simple office bike program, the high school is in here by position.
Ah, there. Okay, great. Wonderful. I'm sorry, I totally missed that. That will answer my question. Thank you very much.
Dr. Francis.
I just was doing a little arithmetic also in terms of the pre-K, and I wasn't sure about the distribution with that, but if you're changing that ratio, I just wasn't sure why you didn't take it down to the arithmetic, arithmetically figured out 12 sections. Because if you take the same 70 kids and move them that way, it would go from 14 to 12. So I wasn't sure what the.
What page are you looking at? I'm sorry.
If you have, well, I think it's in the executive summary, but if you have, you know, five students in 14 sections, that gives you 70 kids. Please tell me I didn't do my math wrong. And if you do, and if you do that, if you then say, okay, now we can do six kids, you only need 12 sections to get to that same 70. So I just was wondering why you were keeping an extra section there, if it's because of distribution reasons or if there's some other reason that that would be, and that can come later.
Is that the section that you hold back because you need to add it in the middle of the year? I know you've had that issue.
It's for, for 1920 right now, it's at the end of the year, projected to be at 78. And so we're already, we look at 18, 19, where we ended at 81. So we feel like we've gone somewhat conservative, but trying not to be in the situation again in the middle of next year where we need another section. The other thing is last year's trend was really unusual in that the number of pre-K that we actually brought into the system was a higher percentage than the birth rate was the trend that we hadn't seen in the last, we ran the last decade. So we need to make sure that this year, that trend's not going to happen again, where our pre-K is coming in much higher than birth rate, which was unusual. So we're being, we're being conservative there. So I can see with this, sorry, can I just, with the, I can see with the 78 that would shift that number. Is it problematic to add a section partway through the year? I mean, is it, is it, does it save money to not run it the whole year or?
I guess that the question is, is it problematic? And I think what we've been told is, we need to budget for that so that they've got budget. And I guess the savings would be, you're only paying salary for half of the year.
So I mean, could you budget for the expectation that you're going to have an expansion halfway through the year? You can always budget that way, and I think we still have work to do even on our pre-K enrollment in that if we don't have the numbers at the end of the year to be able to make 14 sections, we shouldn't start the year with 14 sections. And I think that's what you're asking, if the numbers just aren't there.
I just was going to point Lori back to, I think I figured out your math problem, but I'm not entirely sure. Okay. But just go on page 44. I think it's that the growth rates on services is much higher. So that's basically coming to like 11% of your budget, and the other fixed rates are kind of north of 4%. So I think that's the math issue.
So I wanted to ask, I saw that you held on professional development from where we, where we cut last year. What happened with curriculum development? That was the partner. So is that added back in? Where do we stand on that?
The, in that simple budget, they have targeted professional development and the curriculum writing back in those areas where it's needed most. Is that dressing?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, but is it representative of what we basically took out last year or a portion of it?
We did not add, we did not add back. Right. That's correct.
Mr. Scher, do you have a question?
It's back to the preschool, and I think it was in the executive summary, page two. I was confused. Current ratio, 10 to 5, new ratio, 9 to 6, peer to PPT. What does that even mean?
This has to do with, the preschool that we operate really is mandated by federal law. So you want to have peers that do not have disabilities with children who have disabilities. And traditionally, we have ran 10 children without a disability, five children with a disability, changing that ratio by one, which would be nine children without a disability, six with a disability, which is still a much better ratio than a lot of districts are able to do. And that will allow us to slow the growth rate in pre-K.
So while we're on pre-K, I don't want to lose this. On page 47, it shows a 271% increase, which is explained by actually budgeting for the sections which we've had. So you might want to drop a note explaining that, because it looks hot.
I wanted to explore the new state graduation requirements, and you mentioned in your presentation that it's going to be difficult to meet them, given that we have inadequate staffing at the high school currently. I'm wondering if, by the virtue of Greenwich High School having so many electives that other high schools don't have, if we could somehow repurpose some of those electives to meet the new graduation requirements so that we don't have a massive change to staffing? Or do you feel we need brand-new courses in the high school to make that happen?
It's not really the brand-new courses. What's driving that is help, the requirement increase there, and then also the additional two credits. So it's hard, you can't really move, for instance, let's say you have a Latin teacher, and you can't move a Latin teacher into help. So to not impact people and still be able to increase for the graduation requirements is going to be tricky, and we're working with the high school right now to go in and really look at every aspect of the master schedule, and that'll be ongoing through the spring.
Yeah. Dr. Francis.
What percentage of our high school students already get the additional credits that are required? Do we know that?
I do not have the staffing with me, but I can tell you that we had a meeting with Mr. Petrowski. I don't know if Shemane has any of that with her tonight, but.
I'm not sure you understood my question, and you probably don't have this off the top of your head, but, you know, many of our students finish with credits well above what's required. So is it, you know, 10% that are actually going to have to increase their number of credits? Is it?
It's different.
No, I understand it's different types, but I'm just saying in terms of the actual numbers, I understand the health is definitely a change, but the number of credits, it may be that many of our students already meet that higher number in general. So the categories will be an issue, but I just wasn't sure if like the numbers were as much of an issue.
Mr. Scher.
I think Ms. Dayton and others were, Tony actually asking the question that I'm asking, and I think you kinda answered it. I'm used to a world where if you have certain staff in an organization, you might have the same number of staff, but sometimes you need different people. So you might hold your staff the same, but you might have to trade one type of person for a different type of person, and I realize that's not necessarily a comfortable conversation for people. But I think that was the point. The point is, is that you've held the staff level the same, to the enrollment level the same, but that doesn't, that means sometimes in that thirteen hundred and fifty people, to your point, if we had five elementary teachers we don't need anymore, but we need five, we can hire five new people at the high school where we need them. I think we need to be ready to make those kinds of trade-offs, as difficult as that is, and might impact individual people. I think at the end of the day, I've realized, these are people's lives, but our main mission is to be here for the kids. So sometimes hard decisions have to be made, and that's what I'm trying to get underneath, because I'm really concerned if we are not staffing sufficiently at the high school because we're holding on to staffing at the other levels, that really starts to worry me, particularly in the face of increased enrollment, increased graduation requirements. So anyway, coming back to preschool, which was really what my question was, is, I guess I need, just need to understand the dynamics of how we decide to add a section. I know we've talked about this a couple times, but I always get confused by it. We have to have the preschool program to support certain kids. That's a federal mandate. We must have that program. And currently, if that's fourteen sections, it's fourteen times five, whatever that is, seventy kids. We are required by law to provide a preschool program for seventy kids. Everything else beyond that is a decision we can make. As an example, the, hold on, the federal government doesn't say to you, oh, by the way, you must have this other program. The problem is that if we have a town-wide program, which are town values, and it's in addition to the federally mandated, then we have to start worrying about ratios. The question I'm concerned about is how we manage those ratios. So for example, if we have to support seventy kids, and we want a town-wide program, that's another, I don't know what, hundred, I guess, another hundred and forty kids. Instead of adding a section every time, why, do we manage this so that we save open some spots in the sections we're going to deploy, so that if a child shows up, we can put them in the preschool program without on the fly expanding it in the middle of the year? So why do we need to add, why are we adding sections if that's the way we're managing it? What's happening that's making us have to then add section?
Just that this, this year in particular, and last year, it was that many more students that we weren't expecting. We added more three-year-olds in the last two years than we have. We usually start the year with one or two spots in every classroom ready to take incoming three-year-olds, and you remember, we have to take them until they turn three. There are kids we know, we could be in a relationship with birth to three, but there are also students who move into town, and students who get identified newly as three-year-olds that...
And we didn't have enough spots held back to accommodate those kids.
Correct.
So, okay.
So we project based on what we've known in the past, but we've had it two years.
Yeah, probably need to save more spots.
Yeah.
I'm worried about, just, I'll say it, I'm worried about, you know, I always major on the majors. The majors have to be the K-12 program. Then on top of that, we have to do things that are absolutely federally mandated and that the community values. I don't wanna cannibalize, as an example, the incredible performance of Greenwich High School. All of a sudden, we're loading, I mean, Greenwich High School is an amazing institution. It's an amazing institution. And to start eroding, as said here, educational quality at the high school, we're gonna have to make some hard choices. I'm unwilling to compromise that to support a, the optional part of a supplemental program. So we'll just have to see how it works, and in a constrained budget, it'll be hard choices. I guess that's why we have a board.
Yeah, I think it is really important, just because the community does watch, and we have members here. It is required by federal law, and we do have to have a ratio. And as a matter of fact, the state clarified for us in September, which they had not done really previously, I don't think, as clear as they did in September, we should not drop below fifty-fifty. If we drop below fifty-fifty, we are not least restricted environment. So it's essential that this ratio that we're moving to now is being very responsible, it's really maintaining a wonderful pre-K program, but we are required to have that ratio. So with our class, we do leave seats open, so instead of having six children with special needs, that class may start with four, so you have two spots. But when all of those classes are maxed out, then we will, we would have to add another section, but we are trying to be thoughtful about that going into next year.
Tony, can I just clarify what you just said? So that says we need to have at least a one-to-one ratio, and right now we run our system at a full two-to-one ratio, correct? Right? So there's a lot of distance between two-to-one and one-to-one.
No, we run, right now, we're running nine, well, what we're proposing is nine to six. We shouldn't drop below fifty percent.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't think anybody would propose that. Okay.
Ms. Dayton.
I'd like to remind the members that are staying on this board that research has showed, over and over and over again, nonpartisan research has shown that preschool is the most effective achievement gap closing measure you can possibly invest in. And if we try to redirect money to people at age sixteen and seventeen, it is not going to be a good investment for this district. If you're using the analogy of a zero-sum game in which the high school benefits and the preschool loses, I think that's absolutely insupportable.
So I'm with Jennifer, having had students go through the pre-K program and seeing basically the ease of transition into elementary, basically learning in kindergarten, day one, because they've already had the foundations. It's a very strong program for the kids who need it, honestly, I wish we had more of it, so. I'm not interested in cutting it. I wanna make sure it works functionally. I understand the change in the ratio. I don't wanna be fifty-fifty. I don't think that's a program that benefits anybody. All right. I actually have a question on page sixty-nine, and a number of notes, it talks, in line nineteen, for instance, it talks about professional development temporary, and there's about three of them. One is an ad for one thirty-three, another one hundred and sixty-three, and another for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Do you know what that is? And if you don't, you can answer in the written responses. About four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I'd like an explanation just of what it is. Ms. Dow.
So I did, thank you for the great presentation at the beginning, Tony, because I have to say, it was fantastic to just actually have a nice overview like that. I feel like that's the first time I've seen it done that way, and it was fantastic. Now, the danger is, now I have more questions as a result, but, but it's actually going into a book on page seventeen, and you don't have to answer this, ask, answer this at this time, but it shows the Connecticut Education at a glance, and it talks about the enrollment, and then it shows the certified staff, and that's a ten-to-one basically ratio. Now, ours looks like it's six-point-seven, but I'm hoping, I think, that's because that's not certified staff, and you included all of our employees in that. But I'd love, but it made me want to see the breakdown versus other districts and other comps as we're looking at staffing, and I think it's important that ratios and analytics always makes it a little bit less emotional, so if we could do that, that would be great.
And just to add to that, last year, when we asked for the adjustment to the middle school and the high school, it was more of a, this is something we would like to dig deeper into, it's something we haven't changed in a very long time. You've identified it as a crunch, so we'd like to know what, what ratio it ought to be. If we're not at the right ratio, let's, let's look to be changing it. All right. Ms. Raven, a question.
It wasn't a question. It was more of a statement. So I actually wanted to echo, the presentation was very thorough, and I think the budget book has a wealth of information that's really laid out quite nicely, and I think it's gonna be super helpful to everybody to navigate through this item. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
I don't have my note in front of me, but I believe I read somewhere in the book that there was a big reduction in maintenance in terms of personnel. Am I right on that? Because I was concerned, because when we added the PAC, I don't believe we added any more custodial help, and I don't believe we added any more when we, with New Lev, which is now a much bigger building, and I wanted to make sure that we were maintaining our buildings, so we don't know, is that a decrease in personnel?
I think what you're talking about is on page forty-four, and it's maintenance of plant, which looks like it's a reduction of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That was actually an accounting adjustment. It was a warehouse supervisor that is now shown up in the administration, where you'll see the larger line of, an increase of three hundred and twenty-three, so it's an accounting adjustment.
Good. So, but then I guess the second part of that then is that, do we have any plans for adding a custodian to New Lev to take care of the fact that that is now a much bigger building? Or, and I don't know if they added any additional staff to the PAC when that was opened either.
Once New Lev opened, we had to reassign someone from our district building to, to New Lev to accommodate it, since the size was, it was double in size. And so we ended up having to fill that position at Havemire with a part-time position, so we've not added any full-time head count, but we are having to fill in with some part-time dollars to make up for that.
So page seventy-two, in the behavior support team, it looks like there's an ad to that team to support the work that they do. Wondering why we can't absorb that in the current team members. It's the second paragraph there, it says one position was added to the behavior support team. So I don't know how many people are on that team. I'm sure they do very important work, but adding head count is probably not where we wanna go to red. If you could look at that, let us know about that team. Mary, you don't have to answer today if you...
I have a question.
Yeah, exactly. Tony's taking these down. I just wanna, one other thing, and this is a, an homage to Ms. O'Neill. On the list of things that were not funded or under review, social workers at the elementary schools. This is something that I will bring up every year I am on this board, just as Ms. O'Neill has brought it up.
Eight years.
Eight years, eight long years. It is something that really needs to be looked at, and it's something that belongs in our schools, and is a service we should be providing to our students, and I hope we find a way to do that, if not in this budget, down the road, because it's important. Dr. Francis.
Well, I'm sorry, this is wandering a bit, but it just hit me as you were saying that, you know, the wellness center at the high school, one of the things they've, one of the things they've done is, you know, brought outside services into the school so it's available to the students at the school. You know, that would be one of those public-private partnerships, the P-threes that we've heard so much about. You know, is there a way to, to, I guess it would be more of a public-public, but whatever, bring, you know, some of those services more into the school so that they're more readily available, as opposed to necessarily having to add the head count to our...
All right. Other questions, comments? That's Mr. Scher. We're not to capital just yet. Any other questions on operating? All right. Let me just close out on, on operating, and so reply to capital as well. So for board members in front of you, there's a list of when questions are due, so if you expect an answer to your question prior to our next budget meeting, please get it in on time. If the public has questions, of course, they can feel free to email the board or the superintendent at any time, but for board members, if you're expecting a response, it's scheduled. And our next pure budget meeting, I believe, is December seventh, if I'm right. So, December fifth? All right. You have an operating question. Mr. Scher.
Tony, I think you said roughly, rough numbers, out-of-district placements, five-point-four million is the question. How many out-of-district placements is that?
Thirty-five.
So thirty, five-point-four, you also said something else, I think ELL is embedded in that number?
No, let me just clarify, because on page seventy-five, at the printing of the budget book, you'll find the out-of-district number, which was thirty-three. I think Mary's giving you an actual, it's up today?
Today.
But I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand, those thirty-five kids...
Plus settlements, plus a portion of ESS.
How much of ESS?
We might, I'd have to look up that exact number. I know approximately, but...
Roughly, roughly. Is it twenty percent?
No, about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Okay, so this is five million, roughly five million for settlements and thirty-five kids, correct? Okay.
Okay. That is on operating, gone once. Going twice, we will review this, don't worry. Moving on to capital, so Dr. Davis.
Are there questions about what I presented?
Nothing new, huh? Okay. Mr. Scher, I think you had a question.
Capital. The big projects, twelve, I guess the budget request was twelve and a half million. I guess I didn't really understand that, because maybe I didn't, I thought our Cardinal Stadium, four-point-five, was approved with conditions which would have put it in last year's budget. So is it, what is that four and a half? Is it four and a half the bleachers, or is it something else? I didn't understand why it was in the next year's budget. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I think so. The four-point-five was...
Is what?
Do you remember when we broke it down into three phases? It was, when we were going through the BET budgeting process, we had to break it down into three years. So that four-point-five was reflective of the FY twenty-one amount, so it's still based on the design that the board adopted back last, in February twenty...
But that would've been Phase Two, and Phase Two is a much bigger amount of money. It's like seven or nine million.
No, I think...
Okay.
You know, this is, this is the...
Yeah, it's hard to keep up, I understand. Okay.
But it will change.
I think, okay, so you're saying that that four and a half is Phase Two, it's not Phase One?
Right, because Phase One is this year, that's the three-point-nine that you're referring to, yeah.
And then the, the other, the Fields project, the four-point-seven million? Okay. Just refresh me, for those of you, by the way, who are coming back to budgeting, who got away, we were supposed to do a study, and then we were supposed to get a real number? Was that study completed? Because it was authorized like two, three years ago. Was it completed?
That's what I spoke about in the presentation, that we are expecting the actual number that goes with the, the design, initial design, that is hopefully in December for Central.
I'm sorry, clarify. So you're saying the study that we commissioned will be completed, is in process and will be completed? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are waiting for them to get us the numbers that actually have the different options for the board to consider. We hope that will be in front of you in the next eight to twelve weeks.
So the four-seven is a plug number?
E, okay.
Okay.
Right. Okay. Is, is, I guess, Tony, you're gonna show us a calendar later, and then we're gonna request, we probably have to, ultimately have a discussion, is that remain the budget's, the board's priority, right? But you're saying that the budget you presented with these items in it is based upon the priority and plan that was set in June of two thousand and eighteen. Is that what you said?
The priority and planning that the board has put forth?
Yes.
But this also...
Is based upon what we approved in two thousand, the priorities we set in the meeting in June two thousand and eighteen, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Including Central Field and Phase Two of the Cardinal Stadium, right?
Right. Those were projects that we already had in motion.
Yes, right. I'm just trying to see if this thing is actually, I'm just trying to connect the dots, make sure that this, this thing is aligned to that. Is that what she's saying? Yes. Okay.
Yes, Central Field, yes.
All right. Questions about capital?
I know that you're not able to share specifics with the board, but Western Middle Schools field, I hear that the talks with the state are moving along nicely. Does that mean that they're... Does that mean that they're moving towards getting us actual numbers for remediation? Or does that mean it's moving toward what kind of remediation the state would most like to see?
Yeah, I think with the updates that we've, we've been up to the state twice this school year. And right now, the focus is on a Field 6 and 7, really at the high school, which will help inform what we need to do at Western. And it has to do, yes, with what is the level of remediation that we need to do.
Okay, so, since the planning is linked between the high school and Western Middle Schools Field, in the timeline, is the high school prioritized in time before Western?
We are working on the high school field. That money's already been approved. If things could go our way, we would be doing 6 and 7 this summer. But that's what we're working on right now. There are a lot of regulatory agencies involved, you know, in this process.
Peter.
Tony, I'm just a little, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused by that. Just a point of clarification. Remediation is outside our budget, right? Outside our capital requests?
That actually is where we work with the town and there is actually money on the town side that is handling that. That's why we're in all these meetings together.
Right, it's not been part of our capital requests, right? And we, I think there was an agreement, and if I'm not wrong with the BET, maybe it changed and I just didn't pay attention, to when you know what the number is, then come ask for it. But they're, and they're holding some kind of placeholder whenever those plans get approved, but it's not been, it's been separate from our budget. No? Leslie, it's in our budget? I'm sorry, I was talking about all of it, 6, 7... In our budget and it has a placeholder that is, that...
No, it doesn't have a placeholder. In fact, Peter, at the BET budget hearing last year, we were asked about putting it in and that message has been echoed again. The closer we get to a real number, we should put that in.
Right, so it's not, it's not a part of our, my point is, Peter, it's not a part of our budget deliberations because its handle is a separate item, right?
Actually, it should be part of our budget deliberations because if it's something we want, we have to ask for it. So it's on our side. I said before, I think we should be adding a number. If we come close to having a range of numbers, we should be asking for that so that work can go forward as soon as we have approval. Dr. Francis.
So, if we, I mean, the problem is, of course, that our budget has, obviously, it's sort of a start and a finish in terms of when we ask. So if we had a number we could work with, yes, we could put it in, but if not, that's when we have the discussion about an interim. So if that number comes up at some point where we can't fit it into the budget, then we would go and do that. But it is, Western is part of our budget.
It is, and the sooner we, well, I would say it's been part of an ongoing conversation with BET. I think we need to keep that front and center because it should be a priority for us. This field's been out of commission for three years, so...
Tony made another comment that I didn't understand. She's saying, "We're waiting for the process of 6 and 7 at the high school to figure out what we would need to do at Western." Did I hear that properly?
We are working with regulatory agencies to understand exactly what we need to do to remediate, which can be different depending on the depth of...
Right.
You know, is it a turf field? Is it grass?
Right.
Is it infiltrating the water system? There are all kinds of things that we have to consider. And we are, we are having to work with not only engineers and the regulatory agencies, but trying to make sure what we're doing in 6 and 7 is advising what we can do at Western.
Okay, Tony, I'm just, I'm sorry, the only thing I'm reacting to in that is, I would want to move forward on Western as quickly as possible, independent of what is or is not happening at the high school. That's the thing that's catching my attention. I've never heard that before from a superintendent prior to you, so that's a new piece of information. I'm sorry if that question is a little bit uncomfortable. It's just, it's a change to how I understand this project. I would like to move forward as quickly as possible on Western, totally independently of what happens at the high school, if that's possible.
Dr. Jones.
Well, I think that is part of the challenge, is that we want the high school to guide so that we're making really good informed decisions and that we're not rushing ahead on Western. We could, we could probably have a plan if we don't care what the dollar amount is and we just want to go in and take out the entire field. But if we don't have to do that, we don't want to do that, and we need guidance at the state level so that we make sure we're making a good and prudent decision for the community upper Western.
Lori.
I think I'm in the same place that Peter sure is, that I didn't understand that Western was coupled with the high school, because I thought, or dependent upon the high school. Because I thought the high school 6 and 7, we were replacing the carpet because it's aged. I, we've been doing soil testing for three years at Western, so I don't understand at all how anything happening at the high school is going to dictate what we need to do at Western. It was a surprise to me as well. So I'd like to understand why one needs the other.
Dr. Francis.
So, I'm happy to hear the answer, but I would just like to say that this has been in the emails that we've been getting in terms of updates. And I guess the way I interpret it is that there's sort of fundamental concepts of how you manage it and that we feel that there's a similarity between the two. I guess that's how I've interpreted it. If there's anything that's actually delaying Western, I agree, we wouldn't want to do that. But if it's sort of more of a concept of, these are similar situations, we're going to find out how you handle it and then we're going to apply that concept to both places, I think that would make sense. If it's a delay, then it doesn't make sense. But I had interpreted from the emails that it was more of a general concept will then be applied to both.
Yeah, I might just add, and you know, from the staff perspective, there's nobody who wants that field to open more than us. And so we are going to, we are moving as aggressively as we can, but we do, we do have regulatory agencies we must work with on remediation and it's getting to that point. And we hope to get there quickly. We understand people get frustrated because it is, it is a slow process.
Any other discussion on capital? All right, so, thank you very much, Ms. O'Donnell, Mr. Swanson. I know. You know, I want to echo what Tony said about my mistake at the beginning. We would like, I personally would like to see us get close to the target if we can. I know it's a little difficult and challenging, but I think there's still some room to grow there. With that, we'll move on to the discussion items.
You have the executive summary and it was also referred to in the budget book. So the major findings are that our enrollment over the next 10 years will be reducing and it will go back to what it used to be, to about 8,600 students. The PK through grade 12 is going to reduce slowly because of that bubble that we have in grade 6 currently. We will see a decrease beginning in the year 2026. So we'll be on the lookout to make sure that we continue this. We know that the first five years, we know what the birth rate will be, but after that, it has been adjusted and it's a guess. It's a best guess, best on past, I just forgot the word. Trends, thank you, birth rate trends. So it's very thorough. I think that Jen and Dr. Proudah did a very good job on it. And if you have any questions?
Mr. Scher.
Anne, thanks for putting together the report. And I probably should have sent this to you beforehand, but it was kind of busy this week with the local election, if you didn't know.
I hadn't noticed.
There were two pieces of information and I don't know if you had them or maybe you could send them supplemental. In the last, in a typical enrollment, I shouldn't say typical, in the enrollment reports we've received in prior years, it included a section about racial balance, which is obviously a concern. And it, then it concludes a section about school choice. And it helped us understand, and it also included two other things, classroom availability, which is where are we super tight and where are we not tight? And then the last one is, is that I know there's a published document, it looks like this, you probably, I know, I believe it's published inside the school system every week during the summer.
Yes.
And it wasn't, I didn't see it in the report.
Okay.
So, it shows essentially compliance with the class size guideline?
Yes.
And where we're high, where we're low? And put some color to that. So, and then also it had the impact of school choice? Because I think the important part was really helpful was, what's, was the magnet program effective in moving kids where we needed them to move? For capacity or for racial balance? And what I was really interested to see, I think it shocked me a number of years ago, was the number of kids who were at New Lebanon who had magneted to Hamilton Avenue. It was like, okay, well, that's kind of not real productive. And then, of course, there was, you know, I asked at the time, well, do we know why that is? And the answer was, we didn't. It was speculation that, oh, families, a bunch of other stuff. What I was really interested to see is, how many people actually...
Returned?
Moved back now that the school opened? So, these are in last year's, the 2018 report, the 2017 report? So that the same, these same sections I'm talking about? It would be helpful to get that data so that we can see it longitudinally.
All right.
Okay?
And I just want to note for you, Peter, under the executive summary, major findings, it says the analysis of school choice and racial balance will come under separate covering. So that's coming. I would imagine, yeah, I think it's already in process.
It's on the, I think it's on the agenda plan, but I don't know exactly when, but I'll get it to you.
Can we just get the sections of the enrollment?
Yep.
All right, other discussion? Oh, I missed that.
Hi, Anne. I was just wondering, how has this tail, I know we kind of can tell the next like two, three years pretty easily, but how has the tail changed over time? So, was it, did we have 8,600 as the average last year and the year before?
No, if you look at, let's see, what page is it on?
Just in terms of our projec, I want to say how, you know, how our projections are changing over time?
We had the highest enrollment the past two or three years and from now, it's going to go down slowly for 10 years.
Well, my question's a little different, is the tail, I mean, I understand we can sort of figure out the next five, six years pretty easily, right? But the tail, if we look at how we've done a good, how we've done a good job or so of estimating, kind of like when you've got a sales pipeline report, how often do I usually hit my 80%? Am I at 90%?
We've been pretty close.
We've been pretty close.
Very close, yeah.
Do you, I know that this was done separately from the KGND projections at the time when they did their sort of... I thought we used a different consultant.
He does them for the state and that's...
Okay, so they use the same thing. So has this at all changed this? Or it's pretty consistent?
It's pretty consistent, okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else on enrollment? All right, thank you, and we'll look out for the additional data points. Next up, the capital project process update. Ms. O'Donnell.
I shared a timeline or an outline of the implementation plan with you to sort of show what work we've completed and what are some of the next steps that, you know, we could be working on over the next couple of years. So, so far, and as you're aware, we had worked with Bloom Shapiro over the summer to develop capital procedures, capital budgeting procedures, actually capital project planning procedures. And we're actually in the process right now of testing the templates that they sent us. So we're taking a few projects and dropping in the data and just seeing how they work for us, if they're, you know, helpful, do we want to modify the templates? So that work will still continue. Took us a little bit longer than we had anticipated because we were busy working on the budget over the summer, but that work will continue. And then, so that's step four, that's actually nearing completion, at least in terms of testing it. And then hopefully after that, we'll have a good sense for how we want to roll this out going forward and I guess that'll be with the new COO to determine. But looking at possible project management softwares or perhaps there are other ways of managing this in-house, just utilizing the other tools that we use every day. I'm happy to take any questions on the timeline.
Ms. Dean.
Thank you, Lori, I appreciate it. I know you've been overwhelmed with work lately. I would feel better leaving the board in good hands if we had the software. Are we sure of what software we want? We just haven't purchased it yet? Or is that just starting a whole new research project on what kind of software we need? And I have a follow-up.
I had preliminarily started looking at some of the softwares that are out there, but I thought it was more important that we really sort of nail down all the procedures and the way we want to utilize that tool, because sometimes these tools can be so robust and you end up not using all the features that they offer and you're paying for it. So we do want to see if we're able to sort of manage it in-house. But having said that and also thinking about position control, it's one of those things where sometimes the manpower, the potential for human error and all that stuff, just how complex the process is, kind of just sort of justifies having an actual system in hand. So yes, there is a system that I looked at. I know, you know, the town was interested in making sure that it's a system that, you know, could be either utilized by their teams, similar platforms, accessible, et cetera. But we have not decided on a particular software program.
You alluded to my follow-up, which is training. And I want to make sure when I leave the board that training takes first priority. And I don't know if the timeline is chronological or it's just a listing of steps that aren't in order of when they're accomplished. But what I care about here is the MUNIS training. So are any of these steps happening contemporaneously? Are they happening in parallel? Or is the MUNIS training way down in the middle of this chart in chronology?
So what's interesting about the MUNIS training actually is that the town is in the process of looking to enhance MUNIS's capabilities and the financials is actually conducting or working with Tyler Tech that owns MUNIS to kind of go through the software as it is. So just sort of naturally through that process, there's been a little bit of training, a little bit of like aha moments and how could we, you know, better use this software to our advantage? Yes, it does happen to be later on down in the process. I think it does need to be a collaborative effort, you know, with, with the town just because we may need to utilize the resources that MUNIS offers in order to get that training. But then the other part of it is really in-house and developing those tools, whether they're, you know, documented procedures or just like a how-to, you know, guide to help train those that are just recently joining us.
When we had the joint meeting with the BET, with Bloom Shapiro, you know, one of the things I had asked is, one of the things I had asked was, you know, it's clear, you know, all the sort of the, what I would consider the sort of the practical pieces of following a project once we've gotten the money or we're getting the money in those steps. But one of the things I had asked about was sort of helping us organize sort of a better way of, you know, we have the first thought that we're, you know, going to be changing the entryway at the high school, you know, what's the way of involving different people within the town to help that process be more efficient? And they had suggested that that would be part of the work they were going to develop. When I read through this, I couldn't figure out which of the steps that would be included in.
So in our policy, so in our procedures manual, which I believe you have a copy of, there's a page that actually shows a sample checklist that, that we're supposed to go through whenever we're taking on a new project. And it does, it's a very long checklist in our Excel version, but it allows us to think through all the steps and that includes engaging with the town.
So I guess as part of your transition plan memo that you're leaving behind for your successor, very detailed instructions on where you are would be super helpful because we, you know, you've invested a lot of time and energy into moving this process along. We don't want to lose the thread on that. I hope that your successor is going to pick this up and run with it and, you know, probably a good time for them to engage with the town from the beginning and basically come in and take your learnings and run. Mr. Scher.
I couldn't understand the expected completion date. Is that, is that like, that's the elapsed time or that's the when it's going to happen or...
Right, so the expected completion date, obviously, for those steps that are done...
Is it just how long they take?
Yeah. So, so it's from that, that point... So, it, so it's from that, that point in time. So if you're actually looking at the February, March timeframe, which I believe was around the time that Bloom Shapiro did the presentation, um, so from that point in time, they thought it would take zero to six months, for example, to formalize a process for project training and monitoring. And that's the one that we're in, and yes, it's taking us about six months, because I'm pretty sure we started with them in about May.
And then there's these, I, I guess, Lori, putting on my project management hat, the thing I'm struggling with just a little bit is, um, the critical path, right? Which is, to do all of this, I mean, presumably these don't all have to happen in sequence, some of them do, right? And I'm trying to get a feel for what's the elapsed time of the total project. I presume it's probably like two years long or something like that, right? So I, I just, I, I didn't have that sense. So do you have a, can you add any color to that?
My feeling, when I, when I also heard the presentation and then during the time that I was working with Bloom Shapiro, is there were definitely some items on here that I feel like you would need those two years for. And just thinking through the process and actually working with, you know, Dan Watson, our facilities director, going through the templates is, is very time-consuming. So we first need to perfect that process and make sure that he's truly benefiting, that we're all benefiting from that process, that we're not doing duplicative work, and then we have to apply it to every single project that we have. And, you know, there are more complexities involved as we move through, through the entire process. So, um, so I, I do think it could take up to two years, especially if you're trying to implement some sort of system or software. Um, you know, going through that training, getting everything, you know, loaded, um, could take a while as well. I would expect two years seems reasonable, but certainly there are things that can be done, you know, more quickly.
So we should just, the next item is, when, when would the additional not-starters start?
Um, so in my discussions with, I know, um, we had similar discussions with the B E T as well, and, or the partners on the project, and, um, there was a lot involved in each of these steps.
Yeah.
It was a toll order for us, and we're trying to balance everything else. Um, I would imagine, and as I mentioned before, just finalizing the procedures will help give us direction in terms of software. So as we start to feel more comfortable with the templates, and we're using them a little bit more comfortably, we should be able to look at that software and try to make a determination as to whether or not we want to move in that direction. But then it has, money has to be found for it, it has to be added to the next upcoming budget.
That's why I kept asking the question about capacity, right? Because there's only so much, Dan, and there's only so much of the project manager who goes with Dan. And this idea that we're going to like, go redo all the processes, go pick software, I mean, I do that for a living, it's monumental. And then, oh, by the way, could you keep the trains running on time? And by the way, we're going to put ten pounds of you-know-what in the bag, too, of large capital projects. I mean, eventually, the board has to have a serious conversation about, how's all this going to happen, and what's the capacity? It worries me a little bit that, as much as I appreciate you guys, right? Because we're always got budget pressures and what have you, that's why we started this conversation. But I worry that somebody isn't holding up their hand early enough and crying uncle and going, you know, I'm, I'm supposed to work forty hours a week, I'm already working eighty, I can't work a hundred and twenty. Right? And eventually that, I know, Dan, that's why I'm saying it. I mean, eventually, somebody has to say that, because we got to get realistic about what can be done and what can't be done. And I'm just wondering, you're not going to be here anymore, good luck wherever you're going.
Thank you.
But I just, I, I kind of want to underscore that, because, you know, it doesn't help the eight of us to sit up here, you know, unless somebody tells us to stop, we won't stop.
That's fair, and I appreciate that. I have been very honest about what we're able to accommodate. I'm sure the B E T can attest to that as well, as we had a discussion, certainly everybody wants to move this project forward, and I get that. I, I want it to move forward, too. Um, but I was very honest about what we were capable of handling in the summer, and I was very clear that we were going to try to get through our policies and procedures, we were going to try to test the templates, but with budget season upon us, we weren't going to be able to complete it as quickly as, you know, others may have hoped. So we're trying to get through this, but yes, I think there should be that expectation that we're not going to get through this entire checklist likely in two years, but we will certainly, I think, you know, there's some, some items on here that are important that we can implement perhaps a little bit more quickly, and we'll try to do that.
Thank you. Other discussion? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the master facility plan update. Dr. Jones.
This is just letting you know that we are using the template that you saw, the fifteen-year master plan. The one that's attached, um, to the yellow sheet is kind of hard to read, so just so you, that you know, in eight pages, eighty-four and eighty-five, we did also put it in the budget book, where it is in color, a little bit easier to read. And I know somebody was saying this the other day, is it really a fifteen-year plan or not? Um, well, each year, you're constantly adjusting according to what needs to move out, and we are sticking, what was really important is that we're sticking to the priorities and the way that, um, the board chose to prioritize the projects based on need.
So what's different?
Mr. Share.
Could you give me the secret decoder ring of the last one to this one?
I can tell you, this one starts with year fiscal twenty-one.
Yeah.
So basically, it's the second phase of J C, and it would be the first phase of O G. If you remember, we had asked for the two, we'd asked for both J C and O G last year, and the B E T determined that we weren't ready to move forward with O G, there weren't enough efficiencies to do that. So now, O G is next in the sequence.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I was asking a different question. Tony, uh, I understand you changed the years because the prior year probably doesn't make any sense anymore, so I get that part. If I were to compare this document with the one that we set in June two thousand and eighteen, other than the years changing, what else would be different? Anything?
I might let Lori or Dan weigh in on that, just because
Yeah, you weren't here. You weren't here.
I had it.
What, what, did you do the?
I had your problem.
You are so good.
So it's more consolidated, it's moved two years.
Right.
It's moved two years. So it looks like it's moved two years.
Right, which you would expect.
Right, J C is basically now
Yeah, that moved in.
That's almost combined.
That's delayed by a year.
Right, so that's, and then you add a hundred thousand, I guess, okay, fine.
O G.
That comes down, O G is half what it was for the first phase somehow.
Right, that's, well, you know, that one, that's delayed by a year, too. Okay, what else?
And then, G H S is the same.
It looks like some of these things have moved out to the right. Okay, we need a delta sheet.
Francis.
Well, I think one of the other things, just looking at it, that's interesting, and, you know, we started a conversation on this, and I don't think we ever ran it to ground. But, you know, in this original plan, it's
It should have been one of these flat.
Yeah.
Well, I know, you brought that up, and we never
We never really, but it's kind of, you know, relatively far, but if you look at the new one, we've got like a year. I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the card, cart, and, and, I mean, look at the chart and think. But it looks like we've got a year now that's like sixty million, and then the year after that's like two million. Am I reading that correctly? I mean, is that what we actually expected to do? Ooh, I just closed my one that's on here, so.
This one was flat.
Right, so, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying I have a preference one way or the other, I think that's where the people who hold the purse strings kind of help us with that. But it, you know, there are some things that have shifted in there in the out-years, and I don't know how accurately we think that's predicted, whether that was, you know, kind of why that happened, but those are, it looks like some of the things that have changed.
Mr. Share.
Um, we have a committee on budget and capital plan. I'm wondering if it might not make sense, I mean, this is great to get, thank you for doing this, Tony. I'm wondering if we shouldn't, um, toss this thing into that committee, let them get their hands dirty with it, and then come back and
I'm supposed to do a man.
Well, there will be two new people, there will be new people, and the other people can come back because they're super nice. Lauren's still hanging around in town government, Gaetan's down the street delivering babies and other things. I'm sure she'll come help out, she's a great lady. So, um, right, don't you want to?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, but the point of it is, I'm, and then you'll be assigning in a month or two weeks some new people, maybe we just, I'd love to have a deeper conversation about this on the board, but it seems to me, let somebody go away and do some footwork first. Right? And then anybody who wants to play, let them play. I don't know, just a suggestion.
Ms. Raven.
Um, Gaetan, can you repeat like the first couple of sentences that you were saying? Were you mentioning that the reason why this unfolded the way it was, is there was a financial consideration? Was that what you were starting to say?
I, I was not giving you any explanation as to how it got this way. I was simply saying that, you know, last year, we had had some conversations about, did we and the town and whoever want to try and have a relatively even expense year to year? Or did we want to just do it based purely on priority or other factors and, and deal with sort of bumpy, lumpy kind of expenses? And the one thing that I really noticed, looking at the difference, because Kathleen was kind enough to bring the other chart, and then I was looking at this one, is that this has gotten a lot lumpy bumpier. So in F Y twenty-four, for example, a couple of different years seem to have kind of gotten coalesced, both in Old Greenwich and in the high school. And so now we have a big bump up in F Y twenty-four, um, you know, in, in ways that we, we didn't really, I think, see as much before. So it's just noticing a change.
Guy, um, along those lines, like
Yeah, keep going.
I'm going to do all my talking tonight. So along those, along those lines, um, just going through the, um, campaign process, I think a lot of people are talking about Central, um, potentially revisiting where we had it in the priority.
So, I, I think it's fine for the budget committee to certainly take that up and come back to the board. In terms of Central, for me, it was always, what's the useful life of the building? There's going to be a tipping point, where we need to put more money into it than it's worth, uh, and I think you need to figure out that point sooner than later. So I think when we first did this, it was seven years out, now it's six. Is it five? Is it four? So, you know, or is it still a seven years because it's going better than expected? So I think that's something we want to know. Ms. O'Donnell.
Um, yeah, I think there's a lot of discussion to be had in terms of the, the plan, and should it be a larger plan? Um, but I do want to speak a little bit to the lumpiness that you, you may be seeing, um, because I think this is sort of critically important in terms of how, how we budget here in the town. Uh, so the way it was laid out, and the way K G and D had presented it, they presented it more, um, in this like cash flow version. And so, um, where you were seeing four years, each year was, there were, there were some charges in each of the years, um, there, we have taken that third year, because it was supposed to be design, they split over two years, but in order to do design, you would want the money in the first year, even though it could take you two years. And because you're seeing a lot of color here, and this has everything to do with all those building renovations, um, and expansions, um, a lot of that lumpiness is, is created by us having made that change, just to align, um, the process better with our capital budgeting.
All right, well, I guess the, uh, the budget committee, as it gets constituted, will probably want more information on this. All right, any further discussion on the master facility update? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to action items. We have two tonight. The first is the Launa collective bargaining agreement, and Ms. Johnson. Do you want to introduce the Launa agreement?
Um, I wasn't prepared to have a general statement, but, um, we're supposed to move forward and vote on this contract that was ratified, I believe, on October twenty-eighth. I know board member Jennifer Dayton has been actively involved in the process. I don't know if there's anything that you would want to speak to, as I was not.
Do you want to make a motion? This is an action item. It's an action item.
We need a motion.
We need an inter, we need a motion.
I move that the board accept the Launa contract effective July one, twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second from Ms. Raven. Discussion, Ms. Dayton.
Just the highlights. It's a four-year contract, which is a new, uh, timeframe for us. We have had three-year contracts in most of our union agreements for many years, but this will put us into a, a cycle where we don't have all the other contracts piled on top. So it's, it's beneficial for us to have a four-year term this time, to put it in a new cycle. Uh, we saved a lot of money moving from six steps to eight steps. We basically inserted a new step between one and two, and a new step between two and three. Um, the length of time a person would stay on a step is two years. So to get to the maximum step, it used to be eighteen years, and now it's going to be fifteen years. The G W I is an even two percent rise in each year of the contract. The cost sharing on insurance is going to be, in year one, eleven percent, year two, twelve percent, year three, twelve point five, year four, thirteen percent. We will keep increasing the employee cost sharing, if we can successfully negotiate that upward each time we revisit this contract. There are many, many language changes that I don't think it's beneficial to go through, but I'll take questions.
Any questions for Ms. Dayton? Hearing none? All right, Mr. Share's called the question. All those in favor of ratifying the Launa contract? Passes seven zero, thank you very much, and, uh, thank you to our H R department for supporting that work. All right, next up is a, uh, emergency interim appropriation for Greenwich High School. So Ms. O'Donnell, and I think Mr. Watson.
Okay, we have a, an interim appropriation request for, um, for the re tubing of the boilers at Greenwich High School during a maintenance, a routine maintenance check. It was discovered that, um, the first boiler that they were checking, um, was beyond, uh, well, needed repair. And so where, um, it became an urgent matter for us to repair that boiler before we can even go check on the second boiler that we know is of the same, uh, age and likely in the same condition. So at this time, we've prepared, prepared an order magnitude estimate for your consideration. Uh, we are seeking interim appropriation request in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We're happy to take any questions.
All right, so it's an action item, and I'm, I'm happy to move the request for the interim appropriation for G H S boiler re tubing totaling two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty point seven eight. Is there a second?
Sorry.
All right, Dr. Francis, we're going to let our own numbers take place. All right, um, just discussion, uh, if I understood this correctly, basically, these boilers were on the hook for replacement in the next two years. Uh, the cost of replacing them is, I'm going to describe as large, uh, but this work will extend the useful life by how many years?
I believe you said five to ten, but, ten to fifteen.
Okay, great, so pushing off future work.
This is the money for both, right?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing any discussion? All those in favor of approving the request for interim appropriation? That passes seven zero, I believe the process is underway to get that to the B E T and then to the R T M as soon as humanly possible.
Yes, thank you.
All right, with that, Dr. Francis, oh, Mr. Share, go ahead.
I just want to be sure I haven't lost my mind in the number of years I'm on the board. We have to put these in as discrete requests because line items in the cap, capital items in our budget are line itemed out, and we don't, we don't have the authority to move from one capital project to the other, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, and operating's different. But in capital, we can't move from one to the other without going through the B E T, correct?
Um, so we can't move between projects.
Right.
The assigned project numbers.
Right.
In this particular, and I'm not sure if this is getting to, to your question, but we're, we are looking at some of our other projects to see if there is, um, other capital monies that are related to the boiler re tubing project that could help offset some of this.
Yeah, I guess it was on, I'm sorry, let me just clarify a question. You can't go over here and say, oh, I've got some money sitting left over in the window project at J C, and I could say, oh, let me go grab that instead of going and getting an interim.
Right, that's our understanding, we cannot do that.
The process is, it has to come through us, we have to make it a request. So there's, there's no idea of just move money around in the capital projects.
Actually, not on the capital side, Peter, but this is an actual emergency. We need heat within the next week or two, given what the weather looks like. The advice from the BET and from the town is, we can use money from the operating budget, and by requesting the interim appropriation, that money would be returned to the operator.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Someone had made the suggestion, someone had made the suggestion, I just want to clarify because somebody said to me, standing out on Tuesday, why don't you just not do this and do that? And I'm like, I don't think, I'm fairly certain we're not permitted to do that. Is that true?
Correct, that's my understanding.
That's what I thought, okay.
All right, that's it. Dr. Francis, you want to do the honors?
I move to adjourn.
Well, anybody want to second that, Ms. Raven, Ms. Dayton, Ms. O'Neal, I'll second that motion. That now records. All those in favor of adjourning? Seven. Thank you, everybody, especially our team members.